Right, and 10 seconds from now.
Okay, so good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to this Norwich area museums committee meeting. When we last convened on the 8th of September, it was to hear the sterling efforts to proceed with the COVID-19 recovery plan. However, the briefing for this period, September to November, takes us through the second phase of lockdown. I suppose hopefully today's news points to a more positive 2021, even if there are significant challenges remaining. So as we commence, we have apologies, I understand, from councillor McCartney Gray and councillor Price. Are there any other apologies that we need to be apprised of? No, okay. In that case, we'll move to see if there are any questions or petitions that have been received. Julie, sorry councillor Bridget Colton, please do come in.
Yeah, can I just put apologies for Brenda then? Because I don't, there's been a bit of a hash up there. So apologies for Brenda, can we?
And can I just, can I just say that everybody who's on the front of the agenda would have received an agenda and they would have also received an invitation and all the details for joining the meeting?
Okay.
The other one is George Knobs, he said he's having trouble getting in. If he wasn't here, it's because he's got laptop problems.
Okay, thank you for that councillor Maxwell. We'll note councillor Knobs having trouble with IT and it looks as though there might be some confusion with councillor Jones attending. So we'll accept the apologies there as well. Okay, if we've no further apologies, just to confirm, have we had any questions or petitions received? No. Okay, so if I could ask people to just look at the minutes for the 8th of September meeting, are people happy to confirm those as an accurate record? If everybody could just raise a hand to confirm those. Great, thank you very much. So with no questions or petitions and the minutes from the last meeting received, we'll now move to receiving the Norwich Museums briefing covering the September to November period. Robin, I understand you'll be taking us through this.
Yes, thank you Chair, and I'll introduce colleagues to speak to relevant sections of the report. And what I was going to suggest Chair, if you're happy, is that we'll pause at the end of each section if members had any questions or comments.
That sounds fine, we'll proceed in that manner then.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Robin, I'll hand over to you for the briefing.
Thank you Chair. So moving to the museums report, which covers, as the Chair mentioned, the period September to November. Just in section one, as members will be aware, of course, we had successfully reopened four of the Norfolk Museum Service museums at the end of the summer and into the autumn. So those sites were Norwich Castle, Time and Tide Museum in Great Yarmouth, Gresson Farm Workhouse and the Lynn Museum in Kings Lynn. All of those sites closed again at the commencement of the Second National Lockdown on the 5th of November. And following the announcement that Norfolk was a tier two area, we reopened three of those sites for Thursday, the 3rd of December, so Thursday of last week, those sites being Norwich Castle, Time and Tide and Lynn Museum. Gresson, which had been open previously, is obviously now in its normal winter shutdown period. So we've, we reactivated sites and were able to reactivate our COVID secure arrangements to ensure that both visitors and staff were kept safe. And in a moment, I'll introduce Stuart Garner to talk you through how that is working at Norwich Castle. But across the service, you know, it's been, we remain very impressed with how resilient our staff are and the ability of staff to respond to these ever-changing situations. And it's been a real pleasure to see visitors coming back into our sites again as of the end of last week. In section 1.2, just a reminder, obviously, that Museum Service staff do continue to support wider county council response to coronavirus. So that includes support for the registrar service, for training standards and other parts of the county councils' COVID response. Staff have also been very proactive and very creative around creating digital resources to enable both existing and new audiences to engage with our services remotely, even once we were in the complete lockdown position. In terms of the other sites around the service, obviously, we are continuing to maintain regular site checks for both site security and maintenance issues, but also checks on collections. We are also looking to move to a position where we are able to welcome back limited numbers of schools and carefully manage groups of young people, again, when it's safe to do so. So we're looking to get other sites reopened as soon as possible. And Chair, what I'd now like to do is introduce Stuart Garner to talk about the reopening at Norwich Castle.
Thank you, Robin, and good afternoon, everybody. We opened, as members will be aware from the last committee meeting, we originally opened to the public, sorry, to the museum parcel on the 24th of August, following by being open to the public on Friday, the 16th of October. And of course, then we hit the second lockdown on the 2nd of November, which carried us through and our opening only last week, which is to date on the same basis as what it was before we closed at the beginning of November. So in terms of the actual what we've had to do to welcome visitors once more back into the castle, we had to incorporate some one-way routes. And of course, we also have the added change of all visitors needing to wear face coverings whilst in the museum. So in order to help us do that, we had to install copious amounts of signage around the museums. We also needed to make sure that interactives had been covered and buried off, so to reduce the numbers of touchpoints that we have. But as a rule of thumb, museums are actually quite good in that respect, because although we've had to take some of those interactives out of circulation, the majority of museum visits obviously is visual. So that helps us in terms of our cleaning regimes and only needing to clean sort of large glass areas rather than lots of little bits and pieces if we have lots of touchpoints. We also are part of the NHS Track and Trace, so we have the barcodes that people can scan as they come into the museum, obviously, which works with the NHS COVID-19 app, so that we're an active on that website. And since our last meeting, also, we've been able to incorporate opening up the Timothy Gurney Gallery, which is the only first floor area at the moment of the museum that we have open to the public. As part of the report, there's a schematic there that shows then the some of the routes of which visitors can use. And currently, we're using the rotunda as effectively the hub of the site visits. Visitors come in via the E8 entrance, which has three steps going down, which means we also have at our disposal E9 entrance, which is in the bottom right-hand corner of the schematic, the plan of the site, as you look at it, which has got level access. So that means that we can have people with buggies, wheelchair users, et cetera, that can make their way into the building there. As I say, everybody then goes into the rotunda whereby there is a number of choices of whereby people can begin their visit. They can do a loop around the Natural History Museum or through Bullock and then coming back in eventually into the rotunda. And also included on there is access into the Norwich Union Gallery, which is marked on the plan there as the tea gallery, whereby we are in the near future going to be opening up our next exhibition, Textile Treasures, whereby that will be another route whereby visitors can gain access to that exhibition. But the idea is, is you always end up back in the rotunda, which is actually, the way that the building is designed was obviously a Victorian prison, or the parts that we've got left open now with a Victorian prison. And actually, we're utilizing the same wing routes that we use going back to a central location that we used as a prison and as part of dealing with our COVID-19 plans of how we can ensure social distancing and one-way systems. We also have been, obviously, been able to recommence weddings at Norwich Castle, which has been very well received. We have been on similar, we actually managed to start the commencement of weddings from the 25th of July, but at the last lockdown, the 2nd of November through to the 2nd or the 3rd of December, the weddings were also in lockdown. So what the registrars have had to do is to move those people wherever possible, which means since we've been open last week, we've actually had quite a flurry. Normally, December is very, very quiet for wedding ceremonies. However, we've been extremely busy and we've been having on average four or five ceremonies a day, because they've been managing to move those people into available slots. Again, there's a schematic there, just showing the routes that the wedding parties take. It's very similar to the guests in that everybody enters by the bride via E8 entrance. And then everybody on the red line there, as you'll see, exits out of E6. The bride goes all the way around the building in the car, enters via E5 and then makes her way into the ceremony room from there, following the one-way routes. But as I say, at the moment, we're averaging about four or five ceremonies a day, which is fantastic. Anybody have any questions? Happy to feel them.
Stuart, you mentioned the exhibition that's planned. Is that still planned to be opening on the 4th of January next year?
Yes, it is. Yes, I, apologies, I've got a sign saying my internet connection is unstable, but I had a, so hopefully everyone can hear me. I had a meeting last week with the exhibition coordinators and yes, we are still on track for the 4th of January. In fact, we're hoping to have it completed just slightly before Christmas.
Right, thank you very much. Are there any other questions from anybody? Brenda, yeah, do you? You're muted there Brenda. We can't hear you Brenda, if you're still muted, okay. We'll have to move on in that case. Any other further questions? Okay, so I'll hand back to Stuart, are you going to carry on with the next part of the report?
I thought you were going to do the next part.
Apologies, I'll hand over to Robin for the next part of the report then.
Thank you Chair, and I'll very swiftly hand straight on to Dr Helen Lennon, who's the learning manager for Norwich Museums, who's going to introduce the next section looking at learning team activity.
Very swiftly past the parcel, thank you all so much, thank you Chair for the opportunity to just introduce the learning highlights report that you've already received and just to draw a few pieces to your attention, but also to provide a couple of updates that have occurred since I put this report together. I hope that everybody can hear me okay, like Stuart, my internet connection is a bit unstable, so apologies if I break up. So I won't dwell too much on the recovery processes that we've been through, but they are all outlined in the report. Chair, we've looked.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I couldn't hear that from Helen, sorry.
Yeah, I think we lost your connection there momentarily Helen, so you started to tell us about the onsite recovery.
Apologies, Chair, I'll go back a step. So we were, we had just had County Council Health, Safety and Wellbeing approval for all of our safe systems of work and processes to be able to welcome schools back to our sites, just as the national lockdown was announced again. And all of our booked onsite visits from school groups fell within the lockdown period. So unfortunately, we had to again cancel or reschedule those school groups, which is a shame, but all of the work that we had done is in place and we are taking bookings now for the spring term. So the, hopefully, everything going well, the first school will be with us in January at the castle, so very much fingers and toes crossed that we're still on track to welcome schools back to our museums come January. Alongside all of that planning, we've also been working very hard to develop a virtual programme. And this has been launched over the last few weeks and as we're creating more digital content, we're sharing that more and more with schools as well. So that is very specifically curriculum linked digital content with teachers packs and resources, which is specifically there as a way to support our schools and teachers whilst we aren't able to welcome them to our sites or when we do reopen to schools, that it's going to be a more limited number because of COVID security measures. So the virtual programme is going to be running alongside the in-person programme. We've done some evaluation work with some colleagues, teaching colleagues at North Walsham Primary, and they've come back and given us a glowing report on the virtual programme. So if you're in touch with any teachers or have contacts in the formal learning world, please do share with them that we have a virtual offer available now for our schools programme as well. We, I reported that we are also doing live streamed Christmas in the Past events linked to Strangers Hall. They, on the numbers, we've now hit the 700 mark for pupils that are going to be engaging with our live streamed sessions between now and the end of term on the 18th. So that's been a very rewarding and exciting way to actually be working directly with our schools by live stream, very much like this into classrooms. The other piece of update on our formal programme is that, hot off the press, as of yesterday, we've been successful in being awarded a grant from the Festival Bridge to develop a digital programme specifically to support secondary schools. Our secondary programme is one of the things that we are particularly proud of, museums struggle very much to find ways to be able to put programmes on that secondary schools are able, as much as they are willing, they are able to engage with. We've had some success in that area in recent years and to make sure that we can maintain our relationships with those schools and to continue to deliver to them. As I say, we put in an application for a grant from the Festival Bridge, which we were delighted to have heard back yesterday that we were rewarded for that. So we'll be moving forward in the spring with that particular digital secondary programme. We continue, of course, our visitor engagement work as well and working with audiences remotely, digitally. But I'm also pleased to say that we are finding ways to support visitors on site in ways that are COVID secure, so self-led activities that visitors can use whilst they're in the museums to augment and increase their engagement with the collections whilst they're actually on site. So we had various strands in place for October half-term, we're just developing our Christmas offer, but again, to increase and to help visitors to the museums to engage with the collections, engage with each other and have a thoroughly enjoyable time whilst they're at our sites. The final thing, just very briefly, I'll just mention our youth engagement work, which is obviously a very important strand of what we do. Youth engagement has continued digitally over the last few months. There have also been some key groups have been quite resistant to digital engagement and have been waiting for museums to reopen to work with us or for us to work with them. And so our youth engagement recovery has been running alongside our schools recovery work. And again, as of January, we will be able to bring small, specific groups of young people appropriately socially distanced with all the COVID security measures in place. But that is going to be a very important step in our recovery, because as I say, there has been some resistance and some lack of the desire to actually engage remotely with the museum and the great enthusiasm to get back on site when that's possible. So they were all of the highlights, I just wanted to draw your attention to, but of course, I'm very happy to take questions.
Thank you very much for that Helen. And yes, certainly, the Festival Bridge grant is a great piece of news. Congratulations to everybody on that. So we'll look forward to seeing what that brings in the spring. Are there any further questions or comments from any other members? Councillor Ward?
Yes, thank you. I just wonder what sort of percentage of schools are engaging with the virtual programme? And have you actually contacted all Norfolk schools?
And so uptake is gentle, shall I say, at the moment. The live streams, there was a rush for, so there's a 30-minute livestreamed offer directly into the classroom, there's been very good engagement with. The virtual programme has not, as we have taken bookings most definitely, but it hasn't been as immediately well received. I think it's going to take more promotion and more explaining directly to teachers what the offer is and what it is going to facilitate for them. We have sent out e-bulletins to all of our mailing lists directly to schools, which does cover the all of, I'm not going to, but I'm not entirely sure it absolutely covers all Norfolk schools, that's not a piece of information, unfortunately, I have, but I can definitely check that. So we are actively communicating the offer to our schools and very much hope that once they, obviously under a huge amount of pressure in the run-up to Christmas, so perhaps once they get over that pressure and into the new year, we'll be taking hopefully a lot more bookings. But that said, the desire for schools are very much there and I think that teachers know and place a lot of value on the school visit to the museum in person. And I think that it's a very new area of work, which we're getting used to, and I think our teachers are going to have to get used to when it becomes quite a different offer, a virtual offer. So it's going to be very interesting to see, once we do have onsite visits as well as the virtual offer, which of those two sort of takes precedence, which there is a greater appetite for. So it's going to be an interesting period over the next term, I think.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much for that. If there are no further comments or questions, I'll hand back to Robin for the next part of the report.
Yes, thank you Chair. So I'm going to talk about section four, which relates to our Kick the Dust Norfolk project, which members will be familiar with from previous meetings. But this essentially is our youth engagement activity focused on those aged 11 to 25. And the project is funded through the National Lottery Heritage Fund as one of 12 Kick the Dust projects happening across the country. And as reported to the previous meeting, the project team have done sterling work, I think, adapting their delivery to meet the new world of COVID. And that includes both providing access for young people online, but also providing opportunities for young people who are in digital poverty or, as Helen mentioned previously, you know, don't want to engage digitally, actually, you know, value that face-to-face interaction. So within the report, in the second paragraph of section four, you've got some of the updated stats from the project participation data, which really begin from the start of the First National Lockdown and take you through to the end of October. And you can see in that period, from the beginning of the First Lockdown, there have been nearly 1,400 interventions involving just under 600 individual young people. And we've worked remotely with 19 Kick the Dust groups, so that would be existing groups of young people. And they've taken part in over 250 different digital activities across the county. We've worked with 11 YMCA groups in that time and they've been involved in 90 heritage-related activities. And a number of those activities have been working with young people in YMCA accommodation and obviously providing resources for them has been really beneficial. And I think it's really strengthened already good partnership working with the YMCA. Also in paragraph three, you've got the summary of engagement figures for the project overall from when it started activity back in October 2018 to the end of this October. And again, you can see there's been something like seven and a half thousand interventions with over 2,200 individual young people and the best part of 4,000 hours worth of quality activities delivered alongside nearly 200 volunteering opportunities delivered to nearly 100 young people. So quite a few stats there, but hopefully what that gives you a sense of is the project not only being successful in meeting its targets before COVID, but actually has adapted its delivery to continue to engage effectively with young people since the beginning of the lockdown. Members will recall from the previous meeting that we'd shared information about the art parcel initiative, which saw over 1,000 packs of art materials along with lots of ideas for heritage-themed activities being distributed to young people across the county in partnership with a number of organisations, which was a way of providing resources to young people who, as mentioned previously, may be experiencing digital poverty. And those art parcels were very successful. We extended that offer in partnership with the Festival Bridge, focusing on younger groups of young people. And this week, we're actually distributing something like 1,800 games to young people, again, across Norfolk, that have been to the board game with an Egyptian twist called The Trail of Trials, I have to be careful with that, The Trail of Trials. And this is an Egyptian board game, complete with counters and other pieces, which is being distributed to around 1,800 young people across the county in the age range 14 to 25. And this game was actually developed by the Time Turners Group, which is one of our Kick the Dust groups based at the Stores of Lynn in Kings Lynn Town Hall. So young people not only benefiting from the game, but actually involved in creating it. So those are going out to young people before Christmas. What I've also included in the report in section 4.3 is an update of the evaluation, all of the Kick the Dust activities are the focus for evaluation. And the evaluation from our project is being shared with the National Lottery Heritage Fund, who have commissioned an evaluation company called Renesi, who have been doing evaluation of all of the Kick the Dust projects across the country. And for the first time, we've been able to include within this report a comparison of our evaluation data with what we're seeing nationally. So in the list of bullet points in section 4.3, the Renesi survey figure relates to what's happening in Kick the Dust projects nationally. And there's a couple of interesting sort of headlines for that, from that. The ones that really stood out to me were that 81% of our young people said they were more likely to become a volunteer as a result of their involvement in Kick the Dust. And that compared with 61% nationally. So that that suggests to me that we're actually being quite effective in engaging those young people and providing them with opportunities for progression. And from the stats I was reading earlier, you will have seen that we are actually offering good quality volunteering opportunities as part of the programme. Another one that really stood out for me was the fact that 73% of our young people said they felt they'd had the opportunity to influence decisions. So they'd actually had the opportunity to help shape the project itself. And that's a really important part of Kick the Dust. And our figure of 73% compares with a 66% figure nationally. So I'm sure there's more that we can do, of course, but actually that suggests that we're we're doing pretty well in terms of involving young people in shaping the project. And that includes at the steering group level. So the steering group is responsible for sort of monitoring and managing the project overall. And we have three young people who are part of that steering group, so part, if you like, of the governance of the project. And the other one that stood out for me was 91% of young people saying they'd found the heritage more relevant than they had before being part of Kick the Dust. And that compared with 77% nationally. So again, it suggests that young people are not only enjoying the activities, hopefully, but also that's helping them understand the relevance of the heritage to their lives. So some really interesting sort of feedback. We'll obviously update members in future meetings. And if members wanted a more detailed update of this evaluation data, I'm sure that at a future meeting, the project coordinator, Kristy Marsden, could could join us and give a a sort of presentation if that is something members would find valuable. But I'll pause there, Chair, for any questions or comments around the Kick the Dust project.
Thank you very much, Robin. Yes, I think we certainly appreciate the presentation in the future around that. I did want to ask amongst all the impressive figures there. The project's got a couple of years left to run. Where are we with the target engagement figures? Am I right in thinking that it's sort of a little way ahead of where it might have been expected to be?
Yes, Chair, we're well ahead of target. So in terms of the original targets we put into our National Lottery Heritage Fund application, we're well ahead of where we need to be at this point. So I don't think we've got any concerns about meeting the targets. I think we will exceed them quite significantly.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any further questions or comments for members? No, in which case, Robin, if I hand back to you to continue with the report, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Chair. Just to then move on to the Norwich Castle Royal Palace Reborn project update. As mentioned in the report, there's been a lot of activity happening on site, working with our principal contractor, Morgan Sindal. They've been doing a lot of work, setting up all of their compounds, installing the secure hoardings, both externally and internally, creating their compounds both on top of the mound and in the lower castle gardens. In terms of the focus for construction work, a lot of initial focus has been on the rotunda area where they have been installing the new drainage that will be required when they install the new toilet arrangements, approximately in the area of the old cafe. But we've had to basically excavate around half of the rotunda area to expose the the main sort of drainage connections to enable the new connections to be made. They, we sort of prioritised that rotunda work happening at a time when we knew we would be relatively quiet for visitors. And that work continued during the second lockdown as construction work was allowed to continue. And the contractors, obviously, follow very robust COVID security measures. That rotunda work has involved the installation of a temporary hoarding line within the rotunda itself. But that temporary hoarding will be removed once that rotunda work is completed, which we're expecting to be done by the beginning of January. As well as the construction work, we've also had archaeologists in the rotunda carrying out a watching brief. And they're basically choreographing their activities with the with the construction company. In addition to works happening in the rotunda, we've also had a lot of activity in the keep basement area. That has included the remove, the very careful removal of the Victorian flagstones that lined the keep basement floor. All of those flagstones have had to be very carefully individually lifted, their position recorded and taken off site. We've also had contractors beginning to very carefully dismantle the boardman timbers within the keep itself. We're continuing to liaise very closely, of course, with colleagues from the city council's planning team and conservation officer team. And the work is proceeding, is proceeding very well. In addition to construction work, there's also been a lot of activity around preparing for the the new exhibitions and interpretation. That activity is primarily focused on the procurement of some of the main interpretation packages. So that's things like the manufacturers of the display cases that will be going into the British Museum Gallery, the procurement of the audio visual packages, and also the appointment of the main fit out contractor who will actually install a lot of the exhibition structures. We've also been continuing to develop our thinking around the activity plan. And I'll perhaps introduce Helen at this point, just to give a very quick update of where we are with the activity plan.
Thank you, Robin. So yes, just very briefly, there was a short piece at the end of the learning section of the report that you received about the second phase of our partnership with Archant Press. And so hopefully, some of you over a six week period enjoyed seeing some fascinating medieval facts and bits of information in a half page weekly spread that we were able to develop with with Archant. And that was promoted through their digital platforms as well. And that was a continuation of the, essentially the outreach work, which had been so affected by COVID that was being planned for last or for the summer that we've all just almost missed. And so reaching our audiences through not just digital means, but through the printed press has been a very good audiences to share with them information about the medieval past, about medieval collections that will be displayed in the keep, but also to share with them ways to actually engage with the work that we're doing to get involved in in activities and events or to to flag what's coming up next year. And so also, Robin's just mentioned the the hoardings. The, I'm sure many of you, if not everybody, has seen the the big blue hoardings that are now framing the the site. And there's a strand in the activity plan for an artist to develop graphic images to display on those. And we've been working with the local artist Andy Peters, who has developed some rather wonderful cartoon styled characters related to the broad range of collections in the Castle Museum. And they will be going on to vinyl, which will then be adhered to the hoardings. So that long stretch of blue, blue hoardings at the castle at the moment will again have a way to draw people in and to engage them with our collections and to sort of jolly out that space up a bit. That's also going to have an activity part directly where my colleague Lee Warden, who's the project learning and engagement assistant, is working with Andy to develop a sort of a how to video to to make artworks of historical figures, et cetera. And that's going to be shared with with youth groups, with schools, with all sorts of community organisations through our partnerships and actually encourage people to create works for a second phase of hoardings because they will, we have the capacity to to renew some of the graphics. And as I say, they're going on to vinyls. So that's one of the projects that's going, that's in the planning and going forward at the moment. And we've also launched a series of talking objects videos, which the keep curatorial team have led on. And they are approximately around five minutes long. And they focus on an individual object that's part of the collection that will be on display in the in the new gallery. And they're on our YouTube channel. So if you want to, probably the easiest is to Google Norwich Castle YouTube Talking Objects. And obviously, I'd be more than happy to share that link for the minutes if that would be useful. But that's a programme that has been very much kicked off by the keep project. And it's given being the the impetus and the facilitation to do that. We specifically called it Talking Objects rather than something specifically medieval. So it's a strand that we can then broaden out to other collection areas and use in a host of ways. But that it becomes a recognisable and an engaging way for audiences to find out a little bit more detail about specific objects. And so they're nice and short, so they don't, you don't need to sit down for half an hour and look at them. But that's another one of the examples of the activities in the plan that is ongoing. Our evaluation consultants for the activity plan are beavering away as I speak. And the focus of their work at the moment is actually our digital work. So their their focus for the first year of evaluation is is digital output of all different types. And it's obviously coming at a very key moment, given the the way that we've had to change our broader programming and do much more digital and remote work that I think any of us had ever imagined would would come around this year. So it's going to be very, very, very valuable evaluation, not solely for the keep project, but the the learning that it's going to enable us to do for our ongoing digital offers across the museum as well. So that's the area that evaluation consultants are working on at the moment. And so that's just a few highlights on on the activity plan. And next time that hopefully I report to you, we've got a number of strands coming up in the sort of early spring next year around creative writing and storytelling. So we're just in the preparation stages of those and I'd be more than happy to update you on those in a few months' time.
And just to add, Chair, thank you, Helen. In the report, you've got a couple of pictures, one of which shows the rather magnificent terracotta. We now have in occupation of the top of the mound, but also a view of the one of the hoarding lines that's already had graphics applied to it, just outside the main entrance. So that gives you a sense of what the other hoardings will look like, including those in the lower castle gardens. So that just gives visitors more information about the project and also signposts them to the the temporary entrance, because clearly the rest of the museum remains open throughout the duration of the construction work. So happy to pause there, Chair, for
Okay, thank you, Robin. Are there any
Questions regarding the project?
Comments or questions?
Do I ask a question, Jacob?
Yes, certainly. I think Brenda had to hand up first. If I could invite Brenda to speak first and then we'll come to you.
I didn't catch the name of the artist doing the hoardings. Was it Andy Peters?
Yes, that's correct.
Andy Peters. Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Felicity?
Yes, I'd just like to ask Helen about the Friends Tapestry and whether that will feature at all in the hoardings, in the graphics on the on vinyls, you know, the because some of the panels are already complete and very visual. And I just thought it would be nice to flag that up unless it's the intention to keep them under wraps until it's actually opening time. I don't know what Robin feels about that. But it's, it would be a nice advertisement for the Friends who are making a huge contribution to this, to the tapestry.
And thank you, Felicity. They haven't been included as part of the the hoardings graphics, not for any reason of exclusion. Those two ideas just haven't been put together. So thank you for flagging that. I think I'll, I'll definitely have a conversation perhaps with Esther Morgan and thinking about how that could be presented. Perhaps not in the same run as where we're using Andy's work, but perhaps more around the locations that that Robin's just flagged the picture of. And then I'll definitely take that, take that point on board and we'll have a conversation around that. But
Thanks very much.
I know that there's a lot of comms and a lot of celebration of the amazing work that volunteers are doing on the tapestry. So I don't, I don't think it's the intention to keep it under wraps. Very much something we're happy to celebrate.
Lovely.
And indeed, Chair, I can, I was on a call last night with Agatha Kamolka, who's the member of the keep team who's liaising with the tapestry volunteers. And I understand we now have two adjoining panels that have been completed. So I know that Agatha is is looking at sort of media opportunities around that. And obviously, as part of that, reflecting the enormous contribution of the Friends is is something we'd be keen to do. So I think there is, there's going to be some ongoing opportunities around promoting awareness of the project through the the tapestry. And it's, we've already seen some fantastic press coverage celebrating the frankly extraordinary work of the the volunteers who just kept going throughout lockdown. And I say enormous gratitude to the Friends for their ongoing support with that. But I think there will be a number of of significant media opportunities going forward.
Great, thank you very much, Helen and Robin for that. And yes, I mean, it's certainly something that we do want to be promoting as much as possible. That's wonderful. If there are no further questions or comments, I'll hand back to Robin for the next section of the report.
Thank you, Chair. And it was really just to sort of highlight some other really good activity that's going on across some of the other Norwich sites. So the staff at both Museum of Norwich and Strangers Hall have obviously been very creative in terms of producing sort of digital resources, including at the Museum of Norwich, a series of Facebook films that are referenced in the report and a virtual tour of the the Undercroft, which was seen by over 32,000 people, linked to Heritage Open Day, which obviously this year had to be done virtually. And as mentioned in the report, the six Facebook films produced by the the team have reached over 140,000 people on social media, which is tremendous. Also, really interesting contribution under item 6.2 to Black History Month in October. And the team at Museum of Norwich linking up with the Pro Canaries around the recent acquisition of the Justin Fashionu scarf, marking his wonderful goal against Liverpool in in 1980. And also, section 3, 6.3, curators there also working with colleagues around the service in terms of recording and collecting the pandemic. This is something that curators across NMS are very sort of focused on at the moment. It's actually recording the story of of pandemic, which has been a sort of a hopefully unique opportunity. But a really important, you know, story to be told in terms of the life of the city. And included within the report, you've got some images of some of the objects that have been collected to sort of mark the To sort of mark the, and then following on from that in section 6.4, just a very brief mention of some of the creative work that's been going on at Strangers Hall, who again had to sort of reinvent their approach to Heritage Open Day. And we know that normally both Museum of Norwich and Strangers Hall will be very popular venues for visitors during Heritage Open Days. And this year having to do things in a very different way online. But I'd certainly like to pass on my thanks to the, to the teams at both sites for their ongoing resilience and creativity. At this point Chairman, I'd like to sort of continue the curatorial theme and hand over to Dr Francesca Vanke to give an update on the work of the curators in Norwich.
Thank you very much, Robin. Just before we do that, I think we had a point from councillor Project Colton and then from Brenda as well.
Yeah, all I was going to say was that embroidered mask is really, really lovely, isn't it? And also the actual picture in the pandemic, Owen Mathers, is that like a little logo there? That's really quite effective, isn't it? And can we use that anywhere else later on?
I would need to check on that, but I, I, my understanding is yes, but we can certainly check on that councillor Project Colton. But you're absolutely right. It's a, it's a very striking image, isn't it?
Thank you, Robin, for that. Brenda, did you want to ask a question?
No, I have to say, I have to leave at this point Chair. I'm afraid that I don't have anything, can you hear me? I don't have anything to report from the North Contemporary Art Society because basically we're in limbo at the moment. There's nothing we can do, but I'm sure in the future, once we get going again, we will be able to interact with the museum service as we have done in the past. But currently there doesn't seem to be any scope for contemporary art within the programme as it stands. But I assure you that once we're up and going again, we will be, we will be part of the whole wonderful organisation that is the museum service and especially the Castle Museum. Thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you very much Brenda. In, in that case, if you're having to leave at this point, as this is the last meeting you'll be attending on behalf of the North Contemporary Art Society. I, I think I'd like to sort of just say thank you for being such a long term participant in the cultural life of the city. We've been hugely grateful to what you've contributed to this committee and elsewhere. So thank you very much. Grateful thanks.
Thank you very much Jake, and I really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you again. And all, all the best Brenda.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that, Robin, but I did want to pass on our grateful thanks to Brenda. Amanda, did you want to come in there?
Sorry, I didn't want to interfere with the much deserved thanks to Brenda. But I also have to leave in a moment and I know that it will come up in Francesca's report. But I just wanted to say on behalf of the East Anglia Art Fund that we're really looking forward to next year. We're looking forward to helping support Chrome. And it's been a great pleasure to work with Rosie Gray on the next open art show, which we think very aptly mirrors the theme of landscape and at the moment is called Somewhere Unexpected. Because I think we are all somewhere unexpected. And we're hoping to, we're working on opening the launch for that in January. So just to say that, yeah, we're, we're still here. And we're really, really looking forward to supporting the Castle programmes next year. So I'm sorry, I also have to go. I have a school run despite the pandemic. So Merry Christmas and very best wishes to you all.
Thank you very much for that Amanda. It does sound aptly named, I must say. And yes, thank you for being here this afternoon. Okay, we'll move on now. And Robin, if I can hand back to you for the next bit of the report. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. And it was just to introduce Dr Francesca Vanke to do the update on the work of the Norwich curators.
Thank you very much, Robin. Apologies, apologies if I appear to be looking in strange directions. It's just my internet camera is over here and my screen of my text on it is over there. So if I appear to be ignoring you, that's some, that's all it is. Yeah, I'm here to give a brief update on the work of the Norwich curators who've been soldiering on behind the scenes. There are exhibitions in preparation. The next one up is Textile Treasures curated by Costume and Textiles curator Ruth Battersby-Tuck, I'm sure you all know her. That's going to run 4th of January to the 28th of March. And that's literally ready, obviously ready to go up quite soon. And that's all textiles from our own collections with a combination of fascinating stories to tell with beautiful patchworks, embroidery, bed covers, kind of ranging over 200 years. Quite a lot of them are from local manufacture, but a lot of them with national importance. Something, going to be something really different and not something that we, we do very often. The next one after that, Georgia Bottinelli has been at work for the last several years now on the Dubai Centenary Exhibition to celebrate John Chrome, the chief of the Norwich School Artists. That will be a loan exhibition. Obviously, the, the work of bringing together loans under the present conditions has, has been a work of superhuman effort for Georgia. But she's managing it really well. It's, it's going to be supported by a substantial publication. She has recently won a Paul Mellon Foundation Award to help towards the costs of this catalogue. So that will enable her to include more pages, more, more paintings and more contributors. So that, that will be really worth seeing. She's, she's going to be doing some innovative ways of interpreting some of John Chrome's works digitally as, as, as well. There are one or two loans from America that we haven't been able to have because of Covid. And so she's going to project those digitally on a screen. Obviously, the Friends have been instrumental in supporting us over this exhibition. And I think it's going to be a really amazing and important occasion. And as Amanda mentioned, we are having an open art show, which focuses on landscape, which is coinciding with that. And that, that will be on the Timothy Gurney Gallery at the same time. And there's also going to be a kind of an accompanying exhibition at the Museum of Norwich as well of contemporary photographs. And the photographer's name has suddenly slipped my mind. So apologies for that. And it's modern landscapes, but with the ghosts of historic landscapes superimposed on top of them. So it's a rather interesting effect, bringing the past into the present, which is one of the things that this exhibition is aiming to do. Rosie, our modern and contemporary art curator, has been working on the open art show, of course, and is also busy on an exhibition for further into the future. The Slaves of Fashion exhibition with the noted artist, the Singh Twins, which, which is programmed at the moment for autumn 2022. And that, that will mix their artworks with our collections, which should be a really interesting and groundbreaking actually mixture. Everybody else has been beavering away. Obviously, Tim and his Keep team, Tim has been somewhat occupied with the Keep. But what a piece of news I've only had since writing the curatorial section of that report is that the project curator on, on the Keep, Andrew Ferrara, has won an extremely prestigious Art Fund Award. Did you know this, Robin? It's only, only a couple of days ago. The Art Fund run the new collecting awards for up and coming curators, which gives them a grant towards building an ambitious collection in a particular area that's relevant to their institution. But also gives them mentoring. It's, it's meant for young curators to kind of get them started and to understand how to acquire. Since obviously it's not, that's not something which is necessarily obvious when you're starting out in your career. Amusingly enough, Tim and I applied for this four years ago and we were told we were old lags, basically. We, we weren't young and inexperienced enough. But what we, what we wanted was medieval and Renaissance art, because nobody else was collecting that. And we pointed this out to the Art Fund. So even though we didn't get the funding for that, they have now earmarked a particular section of their funding purely to collect that. So they listened to what we said and Andrew has got it to collect medieval East Anglian coins. So that's a piece of really great news because it's a national competition, which is an extremely difficult, obviously. There's a lot of people applying for it. I think those are probably the main highlights, actually. There's, there's, everyone's doing a lot of things, but I, I think those are probably the most important. Oh, I, I should mention that even though we had to put off this summer, the Turner, the Turner painting Walton Bridges going on tour to Lynn Museum. But that didn't happen this summer. That's going to happen in 2022 instead. It has gone to Colchester Castle, where, where it will stay on display until next March. So that's, that's that.
Great. Thank you very much Francesca for that. And certainly congratulations to Andrew Ferrara for the Arts Fund Award. That's really quite wonderful to hear. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from anybody? Councillor Ward?
Yeah, I'll just make a comment about the Turner picture. Although it has gone to Colchester, there is quite a good copy in the gallery.
Yes.
As I, as I stood in the doorway, I thought it was still there, but.
Quite. I know. I think we're in such trouble for raising the money for the real thing, eh? I know. Yes, we, we did want a good repro, obviously, just so there wasn't a kind of a gap there. But that, that also explains to people that it is on tour to Colchester at the moment. And obviously as Turner was quite influential on John Chrome, we will be making a feature of it in the Chrome exhibition as well from April. So it'll, it'll be back in nice time for that. I haven't been able to go to Colchester Castle yet to see what they've done with it. Obviously they've been closed for some of the time too, but they are now reopening. And so it could be interesting to see what, what they've done with it.
Thank you very much for updating and clarifying there. If, are there any other comments or questions? No, I can't see anything. So I think if there are any further things that people would like to raise, thank you very much, Robin Stewart, Helen and Francesca for taking us through the report there. It's certainly been a challenging time over the last couple of months and thank you all for your, your efforts. Yeah, we do look forward very much to what's being planned for 2021.
Thank you Chair. Just to say that Stuart could just say a few words about the, the visitor figures, but also to make members aware that you may recall at the last meeting, we, we shared after the meeting updated information on social media statistics. And again, we've, we've had a report produced which we could circulate perhaps with the minutes, which give a summary of social media performance up to the end of, of November. And just to make members aware that, you know, we continue to work very hard in terms of our sort of social media engagement. And since the last report in September, we've seen around 1,500 new followers for the Norwich museums on social media, which means across the three museums, we now have something like 54,000 followers on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. And we've also participated in some very significant campaigns, including the recent National Lottery Thanks To You Day on the 19th of November, where we projected a thank you message on to the outside of the, of the castle. But I can circulate the social media summary report after the meeting to give members an update of where we are. But I don't know if Chair Stuart could just say a few words about visitor figures generally?
Absolutely. Thank you for that. If the updated figures could be circulated, that would be appreciated. But yes, certainly if I hand over Stuart now to update us further.
Thank you Chair. There is a section, section eight on the report, just got some headline figures there from the period covering August to November. Just, just a couple of, a bit of commentary on those figures. August and September, we were only open to museum passholders and friends only with pre-booked tickets. So the numbers were relatively low, 244 and 243 September respectively. But the really good news for us was, was the 13th of October. And visitor numbers shot up to 2,414 for, for October. So that was an average of 160 per day, which is really reassuring for us because obviously it, it was a bit of a toe in the water really in, with regards to our offer that we have, bearing in mind that we've got a considerable building project underway and, and for all intents and purposes, look closed. And obviously with a much diminished offer. So, so it was really reassuring that we still managed to achieve really good numbers despite all of that for October. And obviously in November, we had 284, but that was for two days only, obviously prior to, to lockdown too. So all in all, it was over 3,000 visits for, for the period. But actually the vast majority of those were just in the couple of weeks from the 16th of October to the 2nd of November, which is really reassuring for, for the exhibition opening after, after the new year. But, but also for the fact that we are looking to, just as a further note, further enhance the visitor experience of the castle. In fact, once the rotunda works, we've got some rotunda works ongoing at the moment within the castle, which are quite invasive. Those works are due to finish around Christmas time or into the first week or two of the new year. And the contractors will then retreat back behind a hoarding line that will effectively give us the entire of the rotunda back again. That will then enable us to, to open up not only the, the Timothy Gurney Gallery, but also the regimental collections on top of having the Norregunion back online with, with an exhibition. So, so those figures from October are really, they're a really sort of useful indicator to us that, that once we've actually got a further enhancement of the offer, we, we should hopefully be able to, 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 to convert that into some pretty decent visitor numbers. That's all from me. Sorry. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much Stuart. And yes, it's certainly encouraging to see the figures for October there. And we look forward to the enhanced offer that will follow in the new year, where we have also the Chrome exhibition opening with the support, which we're much appreciative of from the Friends of Norwich Museum. Are there any other comments or concluding questions people have? Councillor Clippham?
Yeah. Thank, thank you Chair. And what, I've got a couple of questions. What are the maximum figures you can have through the Norwich Castle Museum during lockdown? How has lockdown affected finances? And presumably they have knocked finances. So my next question is, I'm still a museum passholder and I wanted not to have the three month extension because I'm in a fortunate position that I can afford to continue to support the museum financially. And/or are you thinking about doing a, a donation fundraising thing? Thank you.
I can first and foremost, the, the question about the numbers. We had to do an entire new fire rated survey for the people that would be allowed in the building. We did this proactively as part of the building construction works, because obviously we'd lost some of our major fire exits. And those numbers originally came out at 420. So Covid aside, we would have been allowed 400 and Covid aside, we would have been allowed 420 in the building. When Covid came along, there is two ways in which you can determine your maximum permitted numbers to allow for social distancing. And that is to, to allow 15 square metres per person within the square metre which is space available, or to apply a rationale where it's 30% of those permitted fire rated numbers. So for Norwich Castle, we're allowed 168 people, including staff, which isn't a tremendous figure, considering the fact that, that, that we also have wedding groups that are in the building and potentially school groups as well, obviously from January. So for us, that means that, that the good news is, is that because we're, we're doing pre-booked tickets only, it allows us to ensure with an average dwell time of two hours, that we don't overbook ourselves effectively. But but what we can say is that during a few days within October, when we, we reached those excellent figures, all of our available pre-booked tickets were pre-booked, completely booked. Sorry. So I hope that answers the question on the numbers. In, in terms of the museum pass holders, we are looking to extend those by three months, with everybody given that option. But Robin would probably be more informed to answer the question as to whether it can be a charitable donation. Sorry, did everybody get that?
Stuart, could you just confirm what's happening with the three month extension? I don't think we quite caught that.
Sorry, apologies. It's my internet connection. Yeah, sorry. As I said, the, the, all museum visitors, sorry, pass holders are offered a three month extension as a consequence of, of the lockdown to their current 12 month subscription. But in terms of, can everybody hear that by the way? Sorry, I'm worried in case no one can hear me again. Is that okay? In terms of whether, whether or not that money can be issued to the museum as a charitable donation. I don't believe that that's something that we've given people the opportunity to do. However, it's something I'm sure that we could look into, but it, it would be, it's not something we would probably readily advertise to, to, to people to do. Of course, if people wanted to offer, that would be fine. But, but, but I don't believe we have a mechanism at the moment for doing that. We, we're just giving everybody the opportunity to, to have a full 12 month subscription.
So just to say Chair, thank you Stuart, that as, as councillor Clipsham mentioned, we did offer a three month free period to existing museum pass holders to reflect the fact that obviously for an extended period this year, there's been, you know, there hasn't been the opportunity to, to visit sites. And we've been very carefully tracking museum pass renewals, but also doing a lot to ensure that we keep museum pass holders informed. And it's been sort of encouraging that when we have had sites reopen, we have seen museum pass holders coming back. And members may recall that when we first reopened our sites, Norwich Castle included, we did actually welcome museum pass holders and friends back first to basically try and recognise that, that, you know, how much value we placed on, on, on there being, being members. So as mentioned, in terms of the wider financial point, as discussed at the, the last meeting, obviously, we do report the financial information on the service to the, to the Norfolk Joint Museums Committee. And you know, I think it's fair to say that the, the Joint Museums Committee and the County Council are very well cited on the financial pressures the service is facing. And, you know, holding on to our museum pass holders for this year is important, but particularly what we want to do is ensure we keep those museum pass holders with us for the long term, because you know, they are a very valued part of our, our membership. But also it's a very effective way of us to sort of engage with people who use the museums on a, on a regular basis. So, and it's been pleasing to see the, the sort of messages that have come back from a number of pass holders actually saying that, you know, they are keen to, to stick with us. Even though, you know, you know, times for, for many people are, are quite tough. So we're keeping, we're keeping it under close review. And at the, at the moment, you know, as I say, it's been encouraging that we are open again and pass holders can see some benefit for their membership.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Robin, explaining that. Okay, are there any further points or questions? No. In that case, thank you very much, everybody, for your time this afternoon. And once again, thank you very much to all the staff who've been putting in so much effort.
Thank you Chair.
We do look forward to what's being on offer in the new year. As I say, that includes the Chrome exhibition and the exciting centenary celebrations for the Friends of Norwich Museum as well, which we're looking forward to. So thank you very much, everybody. Stay well. And I look forward to seeing you for our next committee meeting. And I thank you.
Thank you everyone.
Bye bye. Thank you.
Cheerio. Thank you.